Dr. Young, can you please tell me the amendments to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, we don't have a traditional amendment. Rather, I do want to let the general public know that the board packet that is currently present on the county website is published, has been amended since its original publishing on November 24, 2020. The packet was amended to correct an error in amendments for the King George County Board of Supervisors meeting held on November 17, 2020.
Dr. Young, I do want to point out, the Healthy Generations presentation will be dropped, and that is due to the person who is coming, her mother was taken to the hospital, so she will be back on December 15th. And then, we do have one out of a closed session, correct, that would go in just before the public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, I understand there's going to be a motion for a closed session prior to the Sedgwick Crossing matter.
Right. Do we have to amend the agenda for that, or that could be?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, I just want to clarify. Make sure we did it right, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, and you're absolutely correct. I forgot about Ms. Holland, so we will need an amendment to the agenda to strike our presentation from the agenda.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments as a time of the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come up to the podium and speak?
I'm the board, Madam Chair, Brian Say, 5981 Sedgwick Court, here in King George.
Sir, is this concerning the public hearing for Sedgwick Crossing? I'm just asking.
Yes, it is.
Then just hold up, we'll have a public... Oh, sorry, I apologize. That's my bad.
No, it's fine. I was asking.
Too many things, gentlemen, I really apologize.
No, not a problem. I had the same question also, so not a problem.
Go ahead.
So anyways, I am here to comment on Act 1112 of 4 for tonight, for Lady Sedgwick Crossing, the need for the additional $24,000 to complete the work. You've heard me before, I'm not going to go through all the details that I've gone through for in relation to the matter, just wanted to counter remind the board of what's of the history of this. I'm a Ridgewood landowner in Sedgwick Crossing, bought my house in 2006. And when I bought the house, I asked Ridgewood, is it going to be a state road? Because I've been in a situation before with a private road. They assured me it was. I did not take that for granted. I went to the county, talked to the county, and I said, is it going to be a state road? Yes. When? As soon as the last house was built, which is only one more house, has it been inspected? Yes, it's been inspected. So that was the reason, that's the only reason that I bought the house that I bought there. Got in there, decade of struggling with roads not being plowed, trees falling, every kind of tree fall, I got the phone call, because I was the only one who had chainsaw. So four years ago, I thought inside it was time to take care, try to take care of this. So spent a lot of time, asking a lot of questions, figuring out why things hadn't become a state road, had to call VDOT myself, talked to them, county got involved, VDOT came out, found out that nine of the easements were done incorrectly. Ridgewood Home had put the easements in incorrectly, not according to the drawings, and the county, and I went and looked, the county signed everyone off that they were done correctly when they weren't. So took four years to get easements redrawn, had to get surveys redone, had to get signatures by all the mortgage companies, took four years to get through that. And all that time, the roads were just continuing to get worse and worse and worse. If the county would have caught that upfront, they could have been regraded by Ridgewood, the roads would have put in the state system, we wouldn't have this issue. So we've kind of gone along, got to where we are. We had a meeting on the 3rd of August, when numerous residents from Sedgwick showed up and expressed their concerns about where we are, and saying the concerns we're having, the roads are deteriorating, they're not safe for our kids, you know, to be out on, the roads are not plowed in the winter, trees fall and nothing happens. It's just, it's not a situation that we were promised by the county. So came back on the 15th of September, and the board approved or appropriated $135,000 to repair this based on the VDOT estimate. Unfortunately, rising construction costs have drove that cost up, and based on my understanding, the cost now is about $24,000 more than was appropriated in the initial meeting. So I'm requesting that the board take that into consideration, that we move forward, appropriate the additional money, and get moving on getting the road repaired. We're in a situation where now, the past year, the past decade, I've been able to call the developer and hound him when it snows, and he'll come and plow it. He's done, he ain't coming back. So if we get bad weather now, we're just stuck in there. Nobody's going to come, going to come, going to come take care of the road. And the one thing that I do think is unique that I brought up last time, I'll bring up again, this isn't a situation where we have a road that was never intended to be part of VDOT. It was intended to be part of VDOT, the county made a commitment to us when we bought the houses, that this would be in VDOT, and the county did not follow through. So I think that's kind of what makes this a little unique than other situations in the county where we have roads that are in poor repair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
My name is Jack Wainwright, I live at 6113 Sedgwick Court, and I'm here tonight to support Brian and the rest of my neighbors that have been involved in this process for many months I moved into the neighborhood four years ago, and was totally unaware that this road problem existed. Since I've moved into the neighborhood, four or five other families have moved in. And again, all are unaware that this problem exists with the roads. So my ask tonight is that we don't kick this can down the road any further. It's been 16 years, this problem's been ignored, it's only going to get worse, it's time to fix it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name's Nicole Nelson-John. I'm also at 1156 Alberta Court in Sedgwick Crossing, and I support my neighbors as well. I just want to mention again, I've been there since 2006 as well. This has been an issue that's gone on for too long, and as was mentioned by Brian, this is something that was discussed and essentially promised us as original homeowners, I was an, I'm an original homeowner as well, that this would be a regular street. My daughter went to King George High School, we're a part of this community, have been part of this community for a long time, and we did have an expectation when we moved into this community from overseas, my husband's retired military veteran, that we would have a home that was a part of the community. And because this has been ignored, it's like we're not a part of the King George community. That's how it feels. So please, take the consideration and take the time to make the decision to make us a part of the community, because now we're not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brent Hunsinger. I'm the river steward for Caroline, King George, and Spotsylvania Counties. I also serve as the state policy coordinator. I wanted to take the time this evening to officially introduce myself to you all, as I do serve your community, or the, on behalf of the Rappahannock River and the watershed, and anything that I can do for you all in the county. I'm very glad to work with King George County on many restoration projects, education projects. We have an EPA, Office of Environmental Education Grant, that we can spend, in a normal year, you spend money to do outdoor education projects with students in King George County. So we have funding for another two years to conduct funding, to conduct those activities, mostly inside the middle and high schools with you all on that front, as well as, in the past, we've worked with you on many advocacy issues as well, and that's part of why I'm here this evening. So part of the reason I'm here this evening is to answer any questions you might have about our effort to try and designate the lower Rappahannock River as a state scenic river. Last week, we worked with King George Parks and Rec and the King George Garden Club to plant over 230 trees at Sealston Sports Complex and Seidel Brooks Junior Park. Hopefully in the spring, I hope to hold a large tree giveaway for the county, for any residents that would like to receive free trees. Recently, we tried to work to promote hop yard and Willmount Boat Landings. I held a, we held a public boat paddle in September. We had never been able to fill that until I had a phone call with the Economic and Tourism Development Office, and we filled it within two days, because you guys put it up on your site, and it was filled within two days. So we very much so appreciate that. I work very much so with King George County staff, especially Chris Clark and Mike Newchok, through the George Washington Regional Commission Environmental Planners Meetings, Rapp River Roundtable, and then the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, which will meet tomorrow in Caroline County. So once again, I'm very thankful for our partnership. I look forward to working with you all in the future, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see a face with a name.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Does anybody else like to come up and give a public comment? Mr. Dines, is there anyone online?
No, Madam Chair.
Does any of my colleagues have any written correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence to read. I believe everyone received all the emails. I know there are a handful of other citizens from Sedgwick Crossing, and I believe they forwarded those emails to everyone as well. No one explicitly asked that they were read, though, so I was just sharing that information.
I will make sure that they're sent, and they're in the public record, so that we have a record of all of them, like we did with the villages, and I'll send them to our executive assistant, who does that. So Dr. Young, have Megan know that she's going to be getting some her way. Now I will close the public comment portion and take reports from member of the board. Mr. Stonehill.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board, and everybody here in the public. Guys there on Sedgwick Court, thanks for coming out and speaking up, and this has been going on for an awful long time, and hopefully we can figure something out to help you guys out and get this straightened out. Unfortunately, that the folks there kind of let you down, but we'll see what we can do. I spoke to a number of people, either by phone or email, in the last two weeks, on various topics and things, and I would remind people to call and reach out, either email, Facebook, or whatever, you know, you want to get ahold of us, and I'm sure we can answer any questions, or set up meetings, or whatever. Like I said, I'm very open to meeting people, either in person, outside, inside, whatever, you know, anybody feels comfortable doing, or just on the telephone. But report-wise, that's actually all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight, and anyone listening online. Sedgwick Crossing folks, thank you for coming out. As my colleague reiterated, hopefully we can bring something to a conclusion this evening. We'll see later on. Mr. Hunsinger, thank you for coming out and introducing yourself to us. I would, at this time, like to bring forward, and it's, I sent, had Dr. Young send all the information to all of you today, that we received formal word from DCR, that the scenic river study recommendation for extending the Rappahannock River current designation in Fredericksburg to the downstream boundaries of Richmond and Essex Counties. Our portion does, in fact, qualify, and so the next step in getting that, the lower Rappahannock River, recognized by the Commonwealth of Virginia, is to adopt a resolution. So if I could, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read that resolution.
Go right ahead.
Scenic River Designation Lower Rappahannock River. Whereas the Virginia Scenic Rivers Program was enacted by the Virginia General Assembly in 1970 for the purpose of identification, protection, and preservation of certain rivers or sections of rivers which possess high-quality natural beauty. And whereas, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation has been charged with administering the Scenic Rivers Program and developing an objective evaluation process to judge the suitability of river segments. And whereas, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation reviewed the lower Rappahannock River to evaluate its eligibility for scenic river designation. And whereas, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation completed its evaluation and determined that the lower Rappahannock River, under review in King George County, was found to qualify as a Virginia scenic river. And whereas, the Virginia Board of Conservation and Recreation supported the endorsement for designation as a scenic river of a portion of the lower Rappahannock River. Therefore, be it resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors does hereby support the designation of the lower Rappahannock River from the Route 3 Bridge at Ferry Farm in Fredericksburg to the Chesapeake Bay, adopted by the King George County Board of Supervisors this first day of December 2020. And I would move for approval of the motion, of the resolution, please.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you all very much. And I just want to add one more thing. Thank you to Mr. Hunsinger for all of your work with us. Thank you to your organization for supplying over 200 trees, is what I put in my report. Nice to know it was 230. To the county, the master gardeners and members of the King George Garden Club for supporting the tree planting effort last month at Seidel Brooks Junior Park and Sealston Sports Complex. And I just want to give a couple of shout-outs to our county staff. Thank you to the Department of General Properties team for hanging the snowflakes and candles on the electric poles last week to prepare for the holiday season. I know there maybe isn't a lot of joy right now, but I know that's something our community looks forward to seeing every year, so thank you for that. And thank you to the Department of Economic Development and Tourism Team for the CARES Act Fast Track Broadband Grant Award we were notified of just before the holiday. We had a press release about it yesterday. Thank you to them for being willing to put in the time and work to run down projects with providers, given a very short turnaround time. Thanks very much, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Bush.
I'll report at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be brief. I'd just like to say thank you to the Sedgwick Court, our Sedgwick Crossing, people who came out, in particular, to say thank you to Mr. Say. I know it's been about four years now that you originally reached out to me, and we had that initial meeting with Mr. Callahan. I appreciate everything you've done, because I know you've done a tremendous amount of late work, and so I commend you on that, and I thank you in regards to getting all those easements and those signatures, which was critical through going through the process. I know it was time-consuming, but thank you for putting that time in, and serving your neighbors and yourself, and I probably should have done more, but thank you for stepping up and taking so much on it. It was, it's a real tribute to you, sir. I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Kane, Mr. English, Mr. Kellum, and Mr. Woodwell, who also provided emails. I'm of a mind, I know I've heard some different viewpoints on it, I'm of a mind that Mr. Callahan is responsible, but at this point, it's been 16 years. I think the county should go ahead and move forward with, this is just my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but I think the county should go forth and move forward with making the repairs, and then we will figure that out with Mr. Callahan, and it will, you know, it'll be resolved from your perspective, though, and we need to put it to bed, I agree. So thank you for coming out and speaking, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. I want to thank the residents of Sedgwick Crossing coming out and speaking about their development and the issues with the roads, which we will take up a little later. Mr. Hunsinger, I did get that right, I think. I appreciate you coming out. I know I got a couple of those trees from the free giveaway you had in Port Royal, and I really appreciate they're, they're probably going to be very pretty next year, but they were, it was almost at the time they were dropping the leaves, so you can't see them, but they got planted, and I thank you. And my daughter and I walked at Seidel Brooks Junior Park, and you could see that the trees will create nice shade as they grow and get bigger, so I do really appreciate your efforts. Now, I got quite a few things to go through here, but one of the, one of the first things is, Dr. Young, I know I've asked you this for a couple times in the last week, about the audit from the schools. I'm kind of disappointed, we don't have one yet. It was reiterated with the CARES Act Fund, that they needed to tell us what was not spent by December 1st, and we asked for before that, and we still have not received anything. Can you please give us an update?
Yes, Madam Chair, I've spoken with the school superintendent on a couple of occasions. In addition, our finance director has been in discussions with the school's finance director. We have not received that report, but we're expecting for it to be received in short order. I did express the given December 1st timeline. I don't know if there's some complications going on, on the backend at the schools, as transparent to myself, but I'm working with the school superintendent to get that audit, so we can turn it over to the board for reporting.
Would any of my colleagues like to make a, Mr. Bush?
So when we allocated the CARES Act funding, we specifically established a date that any unexpended funds up to that date would be returned to the county, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and our finance department retains those funds, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Can we freeze the funds? If we don't have anything that has been expended, I mean, if it hasn't been expended by today, the funds get recalled to the county, that's what we approved. We didn't just give them a pot of money, and it was utilized as you see fit. We gave them a pot of money, line by line, what it was allocated for, and this is what you can spend it on, not on, well, maybe we're going to move it here or move it there. No, this is what you can spend it on, and if you don't, by a certain date, it comes back to the county. Today's December 1st. I say we freeze the funds, pull them back.
Mr. Granger.
I would just say, it's a little concerning, from the perspective, as Mr. Bush said, these dollars were given as line items, and I don't even think the word pot of money is the right word, because it was very specific. It was, we're going to give you 125,000 for PPE, we're going to give you 90,000 for services for dealing with, doing IEPs and things like that. I don't remember the specifics, but I guess my point is, is it's very specific about the line items that they could be spent on, and there's a lot of regulation in regards to making sure that it's spent properly. And so if they're not able to pull that information, I feel like that should be tracked very closely, and if they're having difficulties pulling that information, it really shakes my confidence and their ability to manage that properly, and it makes me wonder, you know, is there something going on there? And I'm not saying it is, but what I'm saying is a touchy confidence, and going forth, you know, that's something I have to be aware of, then, with any budget, then, you know, if, this is really important, it's got to be very specific, and we have to know exactly how much is spent, because it's got to be spent right, because there's regulations about how it can be spent. I'm not sure why it's taking long, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speculate, but it causes concern for me.
My colleagues, Mr. Stonehill, do you have any? Ms. Cupka?
Yeah, I vividly recall sitting here at the work session, and we discussed and approved each one by line item for various categories. So I want to see the breakdown and why we don't have a report. We made it very clear, December 1st was the cutoff date, that they needed to report back to us by then with any unspent funding, so that we, the county proper, could decide if we had other needs that hadn't been met yet, that we could take care of some county needs with any remaining funding, and it's December 1st, so, yeah.
Mr. Britton, what are the, can you give us some legal?
I don't have the motion that was passed, but this is really an accounting matter. The deadline was that the money that was unspent by that time reverted would not, that was allocated, or actually was earmarked for the school board, would then return to the county, so that the county could spend it as it sees fit.
Effective today.
Yesterday or today. I don't have the motion right in front of me, but certainly not later than midnight today. I don't recall what it said, but yes, December 1st, whether that was defined, I don't know, but at latest effective midnight today. But, so I don't think it's a, too much of a legality, the money out of the amount of money that you allocated to the school board, that they didn't expend as of today, is now the county is free to reallocate that by December 30th of this year as it sees fit. I think you have more of a procedural stumbling block in that you don't know how much that is. So the audit that was supposed to come and the report was necessary so that you could reallocate. In other words, if you gave them a million dollars, and you don't know if they've spent 800,000 or 900,000 or the full million, difficult to reallocate. So there would be, it has to be spent by December 30th, so we do have a time crunch by the county.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the December 1st deadline to turn it into the county was established in that joint work session. After that, when the school board had decided not to open schools as previously scheduled, there was a call for an audit at that time. That was requested by the county administrator to the superintendent, because we had consensus of the Board of Supervisors to go request that. We still haven't gotten that. It's my understanding that all of the money that was allocated to the schools for the CARES Act is still retained by the county. We didn't give them the money yet. If they're going to fail to comply, we still have the money. So if you didn't turn in what you expended yet, then should they be subject to reimbursement? I know there's things that have already been purchased that they could provide, but they need to provide those now. And if there's things lingering, well, the schools got their own CARES Act allocation. This is the county's CARES Act allocation that we tried to help them up, under the premise of, we're giving you this to open up the schools, and the soonest they would even look at opening the schools is January 15th. So I believe we gave that money initially under false pretenses. That's neither here nor there. Today is December 1st, so can we freeze it and make sure that anything ordered after today, they have to cover that? Whether it was on that line-by-line list or not, December 1st was the cutoff, and if they don't even want to communicate with us, I mean, that's ridiculous. I mean, if you order something, you should be able to have a simple Excel spreadsheet and say, yes, on this date, I ordered this, and this is how much it was, so I have a balance of this.
Dr. Young.
Madam Chair, as to the question, can you freeze it? It is frozen. That is what the board already ordered, that they can make no expenditures after December 1st, so that you could take, you could make a supplemental motion to reiterate that or something, but that, that's what it was. Again, the, as Mr. Bush pointed out, the harm could be, if you never got the audit, and December 30th went by, and you had to return those funds to the federal government, because you weren't able to spend them, because you didn't know what out of the 1 point-whatever million was unexpended, that would be a different issue. But Mr. Bush is correct, Dr. Young can correct me, but the money has not been sent to the school. The county has control over the funds. You did appropriate the monies for the schools. Whatever expenditures they made through today, the county is obligated to pay those. But after today, that was the motion that you made.
One last thing.
Go ahead.
So one last thing. Not only whatever's not expended gets returned to the state, but if something was expended that doesn't fit in the category that's allowable through the CARES Act, we're liable for that cost as well. So we would have to pay that.
Yes, that is correct, Madam Chair. That is another ancillary purpose of the audit, which is, if you were using round numbers to have given the school board $1 million, and they had made $1 million in expenditures as of today, but 80% of them were unqualifying, then you would not be obligated to give them that money, and then you would know how much money you would, the county would have to reallocate into county resources or other resources in the next month. That's another purpose of the audit, to check to see whether they were in compliance, because ultimately, the original grantor, so it goes from the feds to the state to the county, and even if the county sends it off to the school board, the county, as the original grantor, is responsible for the expenditure of the funds. So that was, Mr. Bush is correct, that is a purpose of the audit, because the monies could be spent, but they could be spent outside of the line item, or outside of a permissible CARES Act spending plan, so, and those money would not be, need to be sent to the schools. That is another purpose.
Well, I bring it up, too, because I'm the one who put their signature on both of those CARES Act allocations, so I take it very seriously what I put my signature to. So I want to make sure that the treasury, the federal treasury doesn't come knocking on our door, especially since our schools are not open. And I know, Mr. Stonehill, did you have a question?
It's been, what, two, two weeks now for an audit, and we haven't seen anything? Is that correct?
Slightly longer than that, sir. I can give you the exact data, the correspondence.
Well, I mean, it's, it's been a while, and we still don't have that, and then it seems like every year, we're waiting on a budget as well for them, but, yeah, I mean, whatever, yeah, I would agree, just freeze those, and how can we force them to? Just freeze those and how can we force them to get this audit to us so we can reallocate those funds to us?
I suppose the most aggressive stance would be to move to revoke the funding unless you have a, an audit by a certain date because you have no way to ensure that they were spent at all or in compliance with federal and state law. And then you would just reallocate the entire amount and any expenditures that they made that they never got to you would be out of their budget.
Dr. Young, did Dr. Benson specify when he was going to provide that audit?
He didn't give me the exact date, but we were working under the understanding that it would take about a one week to a week and a half turnaround. But I have not received a report.
But I know, I'm being contrite, it's been over a week. I mean, that excuse isn't really acceptable to me. We asked them for it, they should provide it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, if you'd like.
I move that the Board of Supervisors move to revoke the CARES Act funding allocated to the schools if an audit is not received by close of business on Monday, whatever date that is, Monday to 7.
Seven.
At midnight? Close of business, which would be closing of county offices, which is 4:30.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. The other reason I brought this up in my board report is I really, we have a lot of people reach out to me, constituents and friends of my daughters and their parents. And they've, they want their kids back in school. And I, my daughter's setup is right near my office, so I'm in there. I try not to be in there all the time because she's doing her schooling. And so I go to the kitchen table, but I was in there very briefly because I had to look up something on my other computer. And she had, she loses the internet a lot because as everybody knows, I don't have the best internet. We got one of those little Wi-Fi boxes. My other internet is the county phone for my county business. So, you know, I'm one of those underserved people. And she drops out a lot and her teacher, they're all great, but they know she drops out. So she has to turn off her camera so you can't raise your hand and see because she has to turn off her camera to slow down the bandwidth. And they were notified today that they're not allowed to put in the chat anymore because people were abusing it. Well, for somebody, and I'm sure my daughter's not the only one, that is the way she communicated with the teacher when it dropped out or when she had questions because you don't want to annoy the teacher with always raising your hand. And I'm just thinking, you know, we have three well-educated family members in the house that are able to talk to her and help her out when it drops out and she misses something. And to, you know, she gets anxious because she likes to get everything right and she's very studious. But I think of all those other students out there in King George that their parents are working and they can't be there all the time. And I think of, you know, grandparents helping or those that are utilizing the YMCA or daycare and all those kids. And I wonder if some of those kids that are failing is because we're not giving them the opportunity. And we can go through all the debates on COVID and case rates and kids in school, but I've seen many studies that say the kids are losing a lot from not being in person school. And I think of those little kids that K through 2 that don't have the structure that my daughter has or older kids have, like Mr. Granger's kids or Ms. Kupka's kids or even Mr. Bush's son. They have the structure because they were already in the classroom, but those little kids don't have the structure. And I'm sorry, a tablet, one of these, that's not structured. That's not teaching them how to interact with students and get that one-on-one personal. I think there's a way that we can do it. I just urge the school board to just please, come on, get the kids back to school. Whatever safely we have to do, we can all work together. I'm really even willing to be part of the, you know, help out and chat and that. I've been a coach substitute in the schools. I have a master's in education, but that's all my plea. I'm not going to sit here for five years on that. That's just my plea. And just the audit kind of set it off for me today when I asked Dr. Young. Moving that along, Dr. Young, I know my colleagues have brought before about the Christmas lights. Did you do any checking on that?
Yes, Madam Chair. We met with the Christmas Tree Committee today, as a matter of fact, or this morning. And we're going to have a virtual event in partnership with Morris Hill. And that event will take place on December 13th at 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, 5:30 PM. And naturally, as we get more details regarding the music and the agenda, we'll be doing a heavy promotion of the event through our traditional advertising formats. But again, it's December 13th at 5:30 PM. It will be offered on YouTube Live, our normal county YouTube channel. And that'll be the platform for our citizens to, if not participate, at least observe the lighting of the community Christmas tree.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Are you good? All right. That, one, another item I'd like to bring out, as Mr. Stonehill stated, anyone, constituents who'd like to chat, meet at the library or any other socially distancing and/or call on the phone, email, love to hear from you. I want to once again reiterate to all the citizens that we do have a YouTube channel, King George County content, where you can watch all the Board Supervisor work sessions, meetings and the Service Authority, not the school board meetings, but all of the meetings that we're affiliated in. And if you can't be here or you need to watch it at a later time, please check out that King George County content page. And I thanks to our IT staff upstairs and Jeff who videotapes our meetings or setting that up so the public can be informed. I really appreciate that. I got sent something yesterday. I know I circulated to Matt and he had said to bring it up in my board report and I can forward it on to, but if you could specify a little bit, this is on the VDOT is planning to sell a surplus parcel located on Route 610 Indian Town Road. And there was a public comment period. Could you just give a brief?
Madam Chair, that, I suggested that you bring it up in your board report so that, to get it out there in case the county, presumably they always notify, my experience, they always notify county pursuant to law locality in which they're disposing of property that they own. Oftentimes, there may be a use that the county has for it, either the Service Authority or the county itself, Parks and Rec. And sometimes those can be negotiated in a land transfer or a gift. And so you only had two weeks to respond, which occurred before the next meeting, which is why I suggested that it be brought up. And then also, if their board had any comments, it could be sent through Dr. Young or myself to VDOT about any potential uses. And that can be published where the location is, a small piece of the land.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll send it right after this meeting to everybody so they have the information. I apologize for not being able to get it. We had a big meeting with GWRC this morning and I.
I believe it was just dated yesterday.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, if you could send that to me as well?
Yes, I can.
We can make sure it's advertised on the county website.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or just want to hold? Okay. I was mentioning GWRC. We had a very informative conversation this morning. Dr. Young and I spearheaded a talk with all of the chairman and the mayor of Fredericksburg and their county administrators, trying to get us all to work together a little, a little bit and understanding that there, there's some long-hold, not grievances, but bones of contention, I would say. Grievances? I know, Mr. Bush, you were there and I thought we had, I know there was some trepidation at the beginning, but I do know that it was, a lot of them were happy at the end with the discussion, Dr. Young, and you can mirror that. But why bring it up now is because we went over a lot of things that maybe we can work to make it more efficient and better. And one of the things we talked about is the players that are on both of them. There are some grievances that get brought over from GWRC to FAMPO. So one of the things we suggested and we agreed to is that we need to separate the board members from each. So we would have two representatives to GWRC and two from FAMPO, which is the Frederick area metropolitan, I always forget the O, but it's the transportation organization. And they do a lot of grants for road projects. So we would have two board members be on FAMPO and two board members be on GWRC and they would not co-mingle, they would be separate. So a lot of those grievances didn't get moved over. So I would like to put it out there to my colleagues that at the beginning of the year, I'll be looking for, I mean, obviously I'm the chairman, so I'll be stay on GWRC, but that was separate out. And we have two different board members on GWRC and two different board members on FAMPO. FAMPO, King George and Caroline are non-voting members, so we basically sit there. And it is uncomfortable sometimes to sit through the meeting where people are bringing those grievances over. So by separating it, maybe you'll take some of the players out and make it a little easier to talk to one another. And with that being said, I will also forward it tomorrow, once I type up the discussion to all of you. The bylaws, we talked about going over the bylaws and I know there's been things written in the paper and it's a little controversial, but we were discussing parts in the bylaws that could be inadmissible to each locality to change, not changing the due structure, but changing so where the board meetings are on different nights. But that all has to be changed, we think, in the bylaws. So that would have to come before each board guys here. And then it would have to be approved because it has to be unanimous to change the bylaws. So I'll be sending you guys the bylaws. So you can look it over and see the slight changes that, to make it a more amenable and everyone to get along a little better that these are, and then a code of ethics to add in so that each board member, because we've had some board members leave the meeting because they were upset. So it's to keep everybody playing well in the sandbox together is how I put it. So I just want you to put it out there so you guys can think of how you might want to do that. So just putting it out there. And so lastly, I save this to last because this makes me smile. I want to honor a long employee that has worked for, how many years, Wilma, for the 11 years, but she's, she's been in our community and done a lot for our community, especially with her horse farm. And I know Philly with 4-H, why, everything you can think of. I really appreciate what she's and her husband have done for our community. So I have a resolution tonight in recognition of distinguished service for Mrs. Wilma, okay, help me with this middle name, Houchen, I didn't want to butcher, Houchen Ward, Mrs. Wilma Houchen Ward. Whereas the King George County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the exemplary public service and leadership of Mrs. Wilma Houchen Ward upon her retirement. And whereas Mrs. Ward has been an active member of the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, during her tenure with the county. Each year, King George County received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And whereas Mrs. Ward served on the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Commission since September 2017 and showed a genuine concern for our children at the facility. And whereas Mrs. Ward served as both a member and fiscal agent for CPMT since September of 2017. And whereas Ms. Ward has served the community for over 30 years in a leadership role for the King George County 4-H Horse and Pony Club alongside her husband. And whereas Mrs. Wilma Houchen Ward will enter 11 years of local government service, having dedicated three and a half years of those years to the King George County as the Director of Finance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors on this day of December 2020 hereby thanks Mrs. Ward for her contributions to help make King George County a better place to live and work and does hereby congratulate Mrs. Ward as she celebrates her retirement, adopted by the King George Board of Supervisors this first day of December 2020. Do you have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Ward, come on up. Thank you once again, Ms. Ward, her husband Charlie, let her be our finance director for three years and just serving the county. And she used to be with the school system also in their finance department. So I thank you very much and I love visiting your farm. My daughter loves her zebras. But thank you once again. With that, I close my very long board report today. So next up.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Do we need to make an amendment for the minute updates or is it okay since, I don't know if they were published, just which?
That's correct, sir. They were published.
Okay, they were published. Okay, then second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. And we have our county officials report, the constitutional officers report.
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our report from the county attorney, the Fairview Beach Stabilization Project.
Madam Chair, brought this up at the Service Authority. The, there's a FEMA grant to do the Fairview Beach Stabilization Project. That requires two easements. And I also think it requires an agreement, which the Fairview Beach LLC agrees as well. So I've incorporated that into the second easement. One's a stormwater drainage easement and one is a temporary construction easement. So Service Authority needs to get on there, the county needs to get on there for the construction. And then perpetually, the Service Authority and the county need to get on there as well because the Service Authority owns stuff on there and the county needs to be able to do inspections. The agreement is incorporated into the perpetual stormwater drainage easement, which says that Fairview Beach LLC has to inspect, repair and maintain at their cost the project because the FEMA funds don't grant that and it's not public property. They've agreed to that. Mr. Bennett is going to take that to the Fairview Beach LLC powers that be, manager, I suppose, to get that executed. And when it's executed, we'll bring it back to the Service Authority Board and y'all for authorization and signature. There's no fire under this. I do, we just wanted to get it done fast because we don't know how nimble their board is and how quick they could get to it. But within three, four months, we're going to start spending the grant money. So we need these in place. So it protects the county from having to inspect, maintain, repair, and also allows us to get on there at any time so the Service Authority mainly can look at their pipes or if there's a road problem or something else.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Britton. Is that all from your report? All right. Next up, we're going to have our public hearing. This is where I got my, for the Dominion broadband easement. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the Dominion broadband easement. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in an order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Dr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll give a brief report while Chris Steins pulls up the slides. King George County is in a regional partnership with Westmoreland, Richmond and Northumberland Counties and Dominion Power to pursue a robust broadband project throughout the northern neck. The essence of this project includes leveraging established right-of-way to expand fiber throughout the member localities. Though Dominion Power has approved easements for their power lines and associated infrastructure, the company is legally required to secure another easement for the fiber. As such, Dominion Power has submitted a request for the Board of Supervisors to approve the attached easement agreement. To help facilitate the public hearing, I have invited Stephanie Harrington, Dominion Powers Communications Consultant, to provide the board a presentation to provide more detail on the subject.
Thank you, Dr. Young, Madam Chair and members of the board. I've prepared a few slides to go over this evening, not just necessarily specific to that particular easement, but in relation to our rural broadband program in general. I'm going to go through these slides relatively quickly and then I'd be happy to address your questions. So we're lucky here, you can go ahead and advance the slide, please. We're so lucky and fortunate in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We're so lucky and fortunate in the Commonwealth of Virginia that the General Assembly saw fit last year, prior to COVID-19 pandemic, to move forward with legislation, which is unique in the United States, to allow utilities such as Dominion Energy and others to partner with non-governmental internet service providers to bring broadband services to communities that are underserved. No one could have predicted what 2020 was about to bring us, but we are fortunate that we have these partnership opportunities across Virginia. Certainly not just because we all are searching for ways to better our, our homes and businesses for working from home and education, next slide, please, but also for healthcare. I don't know if any of you have actually participated in telemedicine. I have myself. It's a wonderful option that I have at my home because I have Wi-Fi and I can interact with a physician from the comfort and safety of my home. A lot of residents in King George cannot do that because they don't have necessarily the bandwidth that they need to have those kind of conversations with a healthcare professional. And then next slide, there are studies that are indicating that home values in particular are going up when these homes have Wi-Fi capabilities. We're all obviously aware of the economic benefits that pockets of a county can afford to offer when there's broadband, electricity, water, and, and all the necessary utilities that one needs to provide in the year 2020. But indeed, homes, comparative home values are seen to be up to 3% higher with homes that actually have broadband, high-speed broadband at the, at the premises. The next slide provides an overview of the benefits that broadband delivers. Dominion is not an internet service provider. Our job in this project effort is to provide the middle mile infrastructure. And this benefits that you see here are similar to what we have on our public website and in our fact sheets that are mailed to property owners that we may impact with our infrastructure. Next slide. This is a little detailed schematic to show you. Dominion is in the process of improving our grid throughout Virginia. And as part of our grid modernization efforts, we are putting fiber optic cable between our substations on what we refer to as trunk lines. These lines exist today. They're power lines on power poles, going down main roads, et cetera. And we need to add fiber optic cable to improve our operations. But there's also opportunities for us to install fiber on what we refer to as lateral lines. And why is that important in King George? It's important because these lateral lines afford us the opportunity to reach homes and businesses that today do not necessarily have access to broadband or high-speed internet. And it's these opportunities where we look to partner with local service providers for internet. So whereas Dominion is proposing to build middle mile infrastructure, the internet service providers build what is referred to in the industry as the last mile infrastructure to actually reach homes and businesses. Next slide. So here in this area, we have proposed a rather large project comparatively. We have three ongoing projects across the state. This one that you see depicted on this map is our largest. It's a partnership with All Points Broadband that we announced earlier this year. What you see shown in red are what we refer to as those trunk lines. And then the blue lines that you see on the map are lateral. The orange or golden depicted areas represent Dominion Energy's service territory and the green areas represent the Northern Neck Electric Cooperative service territory. So as you see, what we're proposing to do is build over 200 miles of infrastructure that is going to eventually allow All Points Broadband to reach areas that are currently unserved. They may be served with other internet capabilities, but not what's referred to as high-speed broadband. Next slide. So where we install fiber optic cable that solely and 100% just for improvements for our distribution grid, solely for electric distribution operations, it's not necessary for us to receive any more easements than we already have. But in instances like those trunk lines and those lateral lines where we are adding fiber optic cable to be as part of a partnership for rural broadband, we do feel it's necessary to have the supplementary communication easements added as well into the files. And so what we do to reach out to property owners is we mail postcards in advance to make sure that everyone is aware that this project is ongoing. And then we also mail letters and fact sheets to property owners, followed by a third mailing, which includes the easement document itself. We have right-of-way agents that work with individual property owners to help them obtain signatures if needed, notaries, et cetera. And of course, we've been doing all this across the state during 2020, practicing social distancing and making sure we're working with the community following protocols. Next slide. We do offer a public website with additional information and we have a web, an email address established specifically to answer questions that the public may have. These projects are under review today by the State Corporation Commission. We filed in October. There's a public comment period open now. There will be a public hearing, a webinar online hearing in February, and we expect the final order sometime in the middle of next year. So we appreciate your support for this. We understand how important broadband is to just do our business today, today, regardless of the pandemic. And I hope this addresses some of the questions that you may have about the program in general. And I'm happy to take your questions.
Does anybody have a question? I will move on to, now, if you could step aside for one second, I might have a question after the end for when the public comes up and talks. Does anybody in the audience like to come out and come up to the podium and ask any questions? Give a comment. Mr. Dines, is there anybody online?
No, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd advise that we make it abundantly clear that this is the public comment period for the public hearing. So nobody in the public doesn't understand, hey, this is the public comment.
This is the public comment. If anybody really would like to come up and speak about broadband or have a question that we could address, or concern, or statement, please come up. And Mr. Dines, you said nobody is online, correct?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Does anybody have any written correspondence? Just to double check. Last call for anybody in the audience. Ms. Dodge, go right ahead.
This is a question. Will this, Dominion Power doing this affect our bills as customers or as taxpayers? Who's going to pay the bill is what I'm asking.
Thank you, Ms.
The, this, this effort, the three programs, the three projects that are included, the one in Northern Neck, Bottotack County, and Surrey County are under review by the State Corporation Commission. If they approve these programs, those costs will be socialized across our entire rate base here in Virginia. So they would be, appear on a customer's bills, but it would obviously be very minimal. We're talking, I think our first application was in the range of about $30 to $40 million for these initial efforts.
Building off that question, is it just Dominion but Northern Neck also customers? Is it for both? Because I know our initiative is with both electric companies.
Right. I can't speak for how the Electric Cooperative will recover any cost.
But from my understanding, and Mr. Britton probably could give me, more as utilities, they do pass along these costs. I know our cell phone bills, they have that little tick, they're allowed to do it to pass on those costs.
Correct.
I would say it's safe to assume that, Madam Chair. They do improvements to their infrastructure, usually their cost is captured and passed along to the customer.
Capital investment.
Right. One of the questions I had is, I'm, I'm one of those citizens that you would think had it, but, and Atlantic Broadband says they serve me, but they don't. And it's because of the cost of entry. It would cost me almost $30,000 and we have like eight houses on our road to, to put the line down. So the cost of entry, yes, you technically serve them, but you don't serve them because it's a cost. I've always wondered with this initiative, is it going to reach everyone? And I'm sure other people in the community have that question. Is it, is it going to reach everyone or are we, those that are served can't be part of it? I would love it to be part of it.
That's, that's a good question. And one thing that is really nice about this particular partnership is the All Points Broadband organization, their website is wonderful. You can go onto their website, type in an address, and get those kind of questions answered from the perspective of an internet service provider. So I would recommend everyone do that to, to better understand exactly where they're going to be offering their high-speed broadband within the county.
I'm one of those people, but because it says that Atlantic Broadband is, I'm not, yeah, yes, I always get those confused with All Points Broad, too many a's, but it says they serve me, but they don't. So is, I know we have a survey to address this online, correct, Dr. Young?
That's correct. Yes, Madam Chair. So there has been a little struggle with actually untangling that yarn of what is the Atlantic Broadband footprint and what is actually served versus what is not served. And that is why we had asked and promoted a survey, you know, for our citizens to go online and actually put in their address and see if they're in that area and if they're being served or if they're not being served. So it could help get a boots-on-the-ground truth on what's going on in the community.
I know I already did, and I think my colleagues did too. But I just wanted to clarify that out to the open because it's like, even though it's served, and I know that goes up to the federal level and the rules they have correct with that, but it, it's very frustrating when people just like, give us internet. Sometimes it's very, very complicated task. And I think it's a good initiative, but I know Ms. Kupke had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dines, can we, or is, Dr. Young, are you controlling the presentation or is Mr. Dines?
Mr. Dines.
Mr. Dines, can we go back to the slide that has the map on it, please? Yep, that one. So ma'am, just so we're clear tonight, the easements that we're talking about, you're requesting that we grant, are the red and the blue lines on this map? Am I correct in that?
No, let me clarify.
Were all in our entire county?
No, we will, Dominion Energy has either already or will be contacting individual property owners along the routes that you see there, the trunk lines and the lateral lines. We'll be sending out a package of information in advance and then including an easement request to property owners along those routes. One of those parcels happens to be county-owned.
There we go.
There we go.
Just wanted to make sure everyone's clear on what we're doing here tonight. It's, it's just the particular parcel that King George County owns, right?
That, that is my understanding. You have one for you.
Okay, yeah. Right. And then as far as who gets served, you're talking about the service area for this project, which is the pending VOTI grant application, is the gold areas for your firm and the green areas for Northern Neck Electric Cooperative, correct?
Right. Thank you for allowing me to clarify that. That's correct. The Dominion Energy Service Territory is in one color and then the Northern Neck Electric Cooperative, electric customers are in the green.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
That's why I asked you a question. Since you're here, we can ask those specific questions and take advantage. And I know I've, I've had a couple of people, one is not my constituent, the other one was, that have gotten some of your letters already. And so to get it out there to the public to understand that you might be receiving these letters, it's not some kind of scam. It's if you have questions, you could reach out. Do they have a good number or?
We do. We provide direct names and telephone numbers and addresses to the right-of-way agents. And of course, we have our, our rural broadband at Dominion Energy email address that we check all the time.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions on it?
Madam Chair, I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement for the Dominion Broadband Easement subject to the county attorney's approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming up and waiting to answer our questions. Thank you. Appreciate it. We will now move on to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee update by Chris Clark, Director of Parks and Rec. And I know his team is here also.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Since its organization in February of this year, I've had the pleasure to serve as the staff liaison to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. This group was formed to, quote, "advise the board on specific strategies and matters related to addressing deteriorating infrastructure and excess of underutilized real estate inventory of public buildings in the county," end quote. Working around the challenges of the pandemic, the committee first prioritized the 146 properties owned by the King George County, King George County Schools, and King George County Service Authority. These properties range in size from a one-tenth of an acre pump station to the 628 acre landfill. Following prioritization, they went to work. During their meetings, the group had the opportunity to tour the old middle school, the courthouse, and the school board building, as well as meet with the clerk of the courts, Mr. Vic Mason, and the head of maintenance for King George County Schools, Mr. Gary Clift. In addition, requests for information about leases and office space needs were fulfilled by departments and constitutional officers. The group was directed during their organizational meeting not to look at the Wayside Park Mitigation properties or the Ralph Bunch School as they were under review by other groups and committees. In response to the board's request on September 1st of this year, the Infrastructure Advisory Committee compiled the following presentation for your information. Tonight, I would like to recognize the members of the committee for their work, many of whom are here tonight to answer questions you may have. This diverse group was able to examine the properties through both their professional experiences and their work as volunteers on a variety of committees, boards, and organizations within our community. Thank you to Mr. Bob Baird, Mrs. Carrie Cleveland, Mr. Keith Connor, Mrs. Becky Gallimore, Mr. Max Lupton, Mr. Brett Maffett, Mr. Neil Richard, and Mr. Ken Stroud for their great work on taking on this task. And now, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would like to introduce Mr. Max Lupton, Chair of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, to report on their findings and
Madam Secretary, board members, I want to thank Chris for all of his assistance with this, as well as reiterate the thanks for the other board members. I believe there's a presentation. You can put up the first slide, please. So when we reviewed the properties, it basically came down to two decisions, whether to recommend the county retain the properties or recommend the county dispose of the properties. There were a number of considerations we had as to why, you know, advantages and disadvantages for each choice. Those boiled down to location, current county use, potential future county use, and historical and cultural significance and value of those properties. As Chris mentioned, we looked at in-depth three properties. We did review over 140 properties. The three properties we looked at in depth started with the old King George Middle School. So if you go to the next slide, please. So our recommendation for the old King George Middle School is renovation and remediation of the facility for use. We know that the county spends over $50,000 a year renting office property for some of the county functions. We felt that the costs of this could be put to better use renovating and refurbishing some of these properties for uses of this space. The old King George Middle School also serves a number of other potential uses. Right now, it is essentially unused and needs to be cleaned up based on some consultation with a roofing contractor. It did not look like there were any major issues with the building as it stands. Obviously, that would need to be reviewed in more depth. But it looked like most of the issues were cosmetic or cleaning. Potential uses include educational and community spaces. There was some discussion of the need for additional vocational education spaces in the county. This property is located adjacent to other school properties. This property is located adjacent to other school properties in the central part of the county, as well as being near the county administration buildings. Chris pointed out that the current community center is often in high demand and that additional community center space would be welcome. There's also the Parks and Recreation use. There's a gymnasium, an auditorium in the Old King George Middle School that could be used for community events and Parks and Recreation activities, including 4H and other educational. There's also the possibility of renting the space for community use. It was pointed out that a number of church groups rent property on weekends and that the high school and middle school are also used on weekends for other community activities. This property would be available for use if it were refurbished to a state that it could be employed that way. Another possibility that was pointed out is this could be used as an Economic Development Authority resource. There are other examples in Fredericksburg and surrounding counties where spaces are available for fledgling businesses to get low-cost rent and assistance from the Small Business Authority and other organizations in order to help them get businesses started in the county. This would provide a place for a focal point for that sort of activity in the county. Given the location, the future potential uses of this property, it was felt that the best use of this property for the county would be to preserve it and maintain it and look into refurbishing it. The costs of refurbishment could be defrayed by use by the county, as well as potential revenue that would come from EDA activities or rental for communities activities. Next slide, please. The courthouse was the next building we looked at. Of the buildings we looked at, the courthouse seemed to have the most serious structural issues. The courthouse building has actually been added on to a number of times. There are some sections of the courthouse building that have significant water issues, as was evidenced when we did our tour. Given that, and the courthouse building is unique among the properties we looked at in that it is fully utilized. Right now, we understand that the new government center is being constructed that will supplant the use of the courthouse to a large extent. Once that occurs, the courthouse building would be emptied and there would be the opportunity to put the time and effort into it without interfering with county business to renovate and, if necessary, demolish parts of the building that are not economically refurbishable. We felt that there's enough cultural and historic value in the building, including the museum that is currently residing in a portion of the building, the old jail portion of the building, that it would be worth preserving at least some of the building, although you'd need to do a more detailed study on exactly what parts of the building could be easily refurbished, what uses they could be put to, and what would be the best value for the county in the long term. There are a number of other organizations that are involved in museum or cultural activities that could be potential residents going forward. Next slide, please. Actually, one more point on the courthouse, too. Given the courthouse building's location, it's not felt that there would be very many commercial, would be much commercial interest, given that it is almost completely surrounded by other county buildings and properties. The courthouse building also sits on several parcels, so it would be complicated to dispose of it. And as I said, there would be limited commercial interest, given the fact that it sits in the middle of a county complex. The last place we looked at was the Old King George Elementary School. The Old King George Elementary School, approximately half or two-thirds of the building is in current use. The school board has facilities there. We toured those facilities. Those have actually been refurbished. And I think the unanimous opinion of the committee was that they sort of serve as a model for what can be done if money is spent on some of these older facilities to upgrade, refurbish them, redo the electrical, maintain the plumbing, and so forth. A number of sections of this building were also, had new roof put on them, and were in very good shape. Contrast that with the other side of the building where there's an auditorium area and some older classrooms that are being used for early education and special education purposes. While these are maintained and used on a regular basis and kept clean, there are many areas that are not in very good shape and could use some more extensive refurbishment. That being said, the fact that half of the building is in use already, and if it were to be disposed of or demolished, all of those activities using the building would have to be relocated somewhere. I've already mentioned that the county is essentially bursting at the seams for office space, to the extent that they are spending $50,000 to rent facilities outside of county offices to house certain functions. It would seem to be more prudent to maintain and renovate this building. The first thing we would recommend is refurbishing the roof on the rest of the building that had not been refurbished. I believe in the 1980s, the roof on the part where the school board offices located was refurbished. If a similar activity were to take place on the rest of the building, that would go a long way towards ensuring the long-term usability of the building. There are some plumbing and electrical concerns as well, but because the building sits on a crawl space, it would not be excessively expensive to refit plumbing and electrical to bring the building up to current codes and alleviate any potential issues with water supply or electrical problems due to the older wiring and plumbing in that building. Last slide, please. Again, we looked at these recommendations from the standpoint of current county use, future potential use, the location of the facilities. I will note that all these facilities are located near the center of the county, close to other educational facilities, and close to the county offices. They're basically at the core of the county. Many of these facilities include an extensive amount of land associated with the building, including the King George Middle School, as well as the old school, the school board offices at the old elementary school. As Chris will no doubt back this up, the county can always use more outdoor parks and recreation space, and both the middle school and the elementary school have available parks and recreation space. We also discussed at length some of the possibilities that the maintenance department could use portions of the Old King George Elementary School. They already have a shop set up there near the old auditorium. There is a Quonset Hut building that's currently being used by a gymnastics organization. If they were able to relocate to a gymnasium, such as the one in the Old King George Elementary School, I'm sorry, the Old King George Middle School, that would open up that Quonset Hut for use by the facilities department, who could probably better use it as it is a more industrial space for vehicle storage, maintenance, and that sort of thing. So there are a number of plans that we discussed in general terms. More specifically, we felt that all three of these structures were valuable buildings and properties that the county is currently underutilizing. With a minimum amount of maintenance and some refurbishment money over time, the payback would be many times what the investment would be for the county, especially considering current county needs and future county growth prospects. That's all that I have for the presentation here. I'm willing to answer any questions concerning specific discussions or any specific questions about what we looked at for specific properties, if there are any.
All right. Well, I'll open up for questions. I know Mr. Bush is waiting to ask a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we set this infrastructure committee up almost a year ago. So it was great to see this presentation. So first off, thank you to everybody who volunteered to work on this. It was voluntary. You didn't get paid, and some people put a lot of time into this. But I do have some questions. So when it was set up, I believe we were looking at multiple properties, but then tonight we get presented four. So where did that get filtered down? Because I know there are other parcels that we had that we were, you know, it may just be a corner of a road that used to be the county's, you know, it was in use and then it's no longer in use. Is that something that we can liquidate? I know there was a longer list when we stood up this committee. So the question at that point, when we stood this up a year ago, was we need to look at, what do we need to liquidate, get rid of now? And then what can we, what should we look at at a five to 10 years down the road that we have? So I appreciate that aspect with these facilities. But my question is, what happened to the other properties that we were looking at? Because the last thing, I know the county's busting at the seams, you know, and we do need office space, but at the same token, the county doesn't need to be a land baron either.
Yes. So one of the things we did is we created a spreadsheet with all 146 properties we looked at. And we went through line by line, and we rated these properties. And there were a number of properties where we gave them a, if we rated them as a one, that means we were definitely going to have a more extensive discussion. A two was something that we thought we would make a recommendation on in the spreadsheet, where it seemed obvious that this was something that we would recommend to the county to look at disposing of that. There were a handful of properties. They are noted on the spreadsheet. Well, off the top of my head, I know there's a parcel near the corner of Indian Town Road and 218 that the county owns. That's maybe a five to 10-acre parcel that the county's not using for anything. It's wooded land. That's an example of one we would recommend the county look at putting on the market. I think they could probably sell that. There's a corner of land across the railroad track from where the Sealsen soccer fields are. That's a partial acre triangular lot. I think the only one who might be interested in that would be the adjacent property owners, but it might be worth trying to see if they would offer something to extend their property to the railroad tracks.
So you guys did offer those recommendations?
We do have those notes. They are in the spreadsheet, and we have intended for Chris to present the spreadsheet along with this presentation. So, but we did not just focus on these properties. We did spend the first five or six meetings going through this list of 144 properties. Now, many of these properties were firehouses, the community center, dozens of pumping stations already in use. We had no recommendation the county changed the use of those. The county is actually using most of these odd bits of property for some purpose or other. But we did identify a handful that we would recommend the county look at disposing. And Chris has those noted in his spreadsheet.
Yeah. To clarify a little more, groups had, the group had their organizational meeting in February. We then did not meet in March or April due to the pandemic. We met online in May. In that, at that meeting, we went through the majority of the list, going through one, two, three. So for example, Barnesfield Park, that's a three, where it's obviously going to stay a park, doesn't need to change from a park. King George Elementary School, that's a three. We don't, with the group committee decided not to touch that. The ones were the three properties that you saw today and the Dogren Firehouse. We never got to the Dogren Firehouse. One thing is it's owned by the volunteers, it's not actually owned by a governmental agency. And so when the board asked for this report on September 1st and gave, asked the committee to have it ready by November, which it was, they only had two meetings left. So they, they had too many, we had two meetings to put together the presentation. So we didn't get a full year together. I think it was seven meetings, if you include the organizational meeting. We did have a brief, small meeting, which didn't meet any quorums last month, where we did a dry run through the presentation because we, because of the change in meetings last month. The two lots, there are two lots that stand out that are vacant. There are the proffered lots at the corner of Fort Conway Road and Kings Highway. Those must be used for public use. They're part of the proffers of the Hoppyard Development, so we cannot, the county can't just unload those. They will need to be used at some point for something. There are two lots that the county schools own that were deeded to them at the death of a citizen off of 218. They're the school's properties, so not really for us to say, as county employees or county commission, what to say to do with those lots. But it is intriguing in that way that they have these lots that were willed to them. So there was some challenges there, trying to get the information based on the four properties that were really discussed in the organizational meeting, that were the ones that needed to be looked at, that were current vacant structures or decaying structures, as a lot of people like to say, with the old middle school, the courthouse being ready to be vacant, and then the school board building and whether or not the, you know, we would relocate the preschool head start and the school board offices to a different facility.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that y'all looked at those then, and then maybe we have something where we can look into now, the board eventually scheduling maybe a work session, Madam Chair, to where we can go through the recommendations that y'all have to liquidate and then maybe get, get some revenue for those properties. Look at maybe advertising those or something. So thank you very much.
For clarification, that too, sir. Each member of the committee had a, has a binder like this. There's mostly a reference copy that will be delivered to Dr. Young tomorrow morning so, for the board to be able to review.
Well, let me ask you this. So you guys had a lot of roadblocks in getting, when we met initially during the organizational meeting, a year timeframe seemed suitable, but then COVID hit and all these different things and challenges of online meetings. Do you think there's still more work to be done? Do you think the committee should be dissolved after tonight? Or do you think maybe a six-month extension and the committee come back with, with a final conclusion? I mean, because I don't want to be at a point where we stood something up a year ago with a goal. I don't want it to be, well, you said we were going to do it, so we did it. Put the check mark and move on. I want it to have a point. So is, is there more work to be done to give a final product, or is this it?
Speaking as the chairman, I think we had the discussions that we needed to have to come to consensus as a committee. I think if we had had more time, we could have had a more polished presentation, and we could have gone into a little more detail about some of the other properties that we have recommendations on. I don't think there would be more decision-making involved. I think it would just be more polishing the presentation for the Board of Supervisors. My personal opinion is that I would rather us hand over what we have now and have the board start their deliberations as opposed to delaying another six months. My concern is some of the properties do need some maintenance. They do need some, a plan needs to be put together to preserve these. They are decaying, and there is no, no cost option here for any of these properties. You're going to either spend money to preserve the value you have, or you're going to do nothing and let them decay further and lose the value that's still in them, or you're going to decide to get rid of them. And as I said, the properties that are worth getting rid of are these sort of bits and pieces, parcels, not really the three large ones we looked at. I think they're much more valuable if the county retains those. But in order to maximize that value, they need to have a plan put in place to start maintaining them sooner rather than later. Another winter of letting the middle school sit the way it is, it's not going to do it any favors.
And the problem is paying for those things to get done.
Exactly.
So that leads me to, so the one thing I will disagree with was the Parks and Rec could always use more space. I think we've got enough parks in King George County. We've got to address some other things besides parks. Sorry, man. I know I always go punch you with that, but, but you said the, the current school board office seemed to be in good repair with the roof and stuff like that. But I had questions about the ADA compliance of the building, the Quonset Hut, that backside of that building now, just from my observations, it looks like a bombed-out shelter in Beirut in the 80s. That, that's what it looks like to me. So y'all did bring up a good point about reutilizing the middle school, the old middle school, especially with the amount of acreage that it has and that location. That's key for the county, especially for future expansion on that facility, should we need it. Eventually, we will. But would it be feasible that if we were remodeling, let's say, the old middle school, and we moved the school board office or asked the school board, the independently elected body of the school board, to move to the old middle school? If they did that, then that leaves that, that older building out there, which is not, has no historical value because the original building is gone. It's under the parking lot. We could rezone that property and have it torn down and maximize our money for it, because we have no use for that after that point, and put that money into revitalization of the old middle school and maybe locate some other county offices there. It's just an idea. I know y'all, y'all presented that these four buildings we need, we need to keep, but I think if we got rid of one, we could move that into one of those other facilities. Because money, money is tight. Ultimately, we have to pay for this. Whatever we do, we're going to have to pull a bond. That bond will be paid for by the citizens of King George. We don't have a magic bolt where we make money. We don't make money. We take We don't make money, we take money. It's just sad truth of government. So being that we would have to, have to pay for that, I would like to look at that option, and obviously down the road. But yes, we need a plan, and we need to, we need to stick to a plan and, and get this addressed. The middle school has been sitting there. So I'm really glad y'all brought this up. So thank you again for everything that y'all did, all the volunteers that worked on this. But we got to come up with an actual plan, and then figure how, how's this all going to be serviced? What are we doing with the service authority? Can the service authority absorb moving, moving this? You know, what's happening with Perkins Corner, or are we going to Hopyard? All those questions need to be asked, and that's why I think we need to schedule maybe a workshop or something, Madam Chair. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Granger?
I agree with Mr. Bush about the scheduling of the work session. I think that would probably be for the best. But aside from that, I'd just like to say thank you to all the ladies and gentlemen who participate on the committee and taking the time and helping to come to a recommendation. So thank you for putting the time in. Mr. Clark, thank you for helping to lead that as well, and coordinating everything. So, and especially with challenging times, I know it's been tough, but thank you so much for doing that. Just to make sure I heard correctly, it sounded to me, what I heard was, you felt all the buildings were salvageable, with the one caveat maybe being the courthouse, what portions might be salvageable, because it's been added on multiple times. If I heard that correctly, right?
Yes, that was the consensus of the committee, was that there was enough value in all of the buildings that most, if not all of the buildings, it would be worth putting the money into to develop them into useful county assets, as opposed to leaving them in state there.
Okay, that's, that's, it's great to hear. I appreciate that, that input. I agree with Mr. Bush, when I looked at, for instance, like the Quonset hut, I, that was a surprise recommendation. And I'm no expert, and so I know that you have some people on the committee who definitely have insight, more insight into this than I certainly have. So it's encouraging to hear that, so thank you for, for the recommendations.
Yeah, I'll reiterate on the Quonset hut specifically, that, we had a discussion with the maintenance person at the Old King George Elementary School, and they seemed particularly interested in being able to use that for a maintenance facility. I agree that probably having gymnastics in it is not the best use for that. It is a very industrial-looking space, even with all the gymnastics equipment in it. But the maintenance department expressed a need for additional space of facilities as well. So again, I understand that there are costs involved. I think there could be a plan, come up with, that defrays the cost by, you know, initial refurbishment, and then using that to generate some revenue, or save some of the $51,000 that's being spent on rents, and then paying that forward and using that to refurbish, and doing a gradual phase approach, as opposed to, you know, writing a bond for hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. So that, that was something that was discussed. We did not discuss details though, because we were not, didn't feel like it was within the purview of our committee to make a detailed plan recommendation to the county. And we didn't feel like we really had all the inside information, history of all these properties, to be able to make that sort of a detailed plan, a recommendation to the county. So we, we stuck with a much simpler plan, and we had limited time as well.
Totally understand, but again, I appreciate the time you guys have put in, and I appreciate the recommendation. I don't really have any other questions, but like I said, I think, I think it would behoove us to probably have a work session though, to really sit down and sink our teeth into it though.
All right, pass on Ms. Kupka.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to, as my colleagues did already, thank all of you who volunteered your time, and, and especially you all came out tonight to, to back this up. And that speaks volumes. That did not go unnoticed. And I also want to thank Mr. Clark for facilitating your efforts. Thanks very much.
Mr. Stonehill?
Just want to reiterate the thanks for everybody I know, I've served on a couple of the volunteered boards, and, and I know it's a lot of work and time away from family and work and stuff, but I certainly appreciate and look forward to kind of breezing through what you came up with. But I would definitely be very interested in trying to unload some of the, the properties that are available to use that money to go towards the other buildings. So be interested to look at that, and also do a work session where we can get more detail into that. But thank you again, everybody.
I'll be the last one, I have to be honest with you. I wasn't for this committee, as, as you all know, as that first meeting. But I want, I hope this means a little bit more to you. I really appreciate you, you giving your recommendations. And when I first looked at, I called it brochure, but I understand now the limitations, and I did understand that. And, and I did appreciate what you mentioned, Mr. Lupton, and, and all your staff, I mean, staff, your committee, sorry, I apologize. That, the whole point of this, when I brought this up originally a year ago, is that I'm one of those people that sees an ease and wants to, you know, solve the problem right away, but that's not what you can do. And so you're saying that no more six months, we need to take care of it now. I do appreciate that, that statement, because to me, and I know, Mr. Bush and I disagree on this, but I want to take care of it now, because we've left them go too long, so we need to take care of it. So I do appreciate, and I do appreciate all the time all of you put in. All of you, I know, have different levels of expertise. So I do see the different levels in now, and, 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 Mr. Lupton, you gave a good presentation, a summary of all your group's work, and I, I see Mr. Richard has the binder. It seems very thorough, and, and I know all, most of you I know, and I, I know you guys do a thorough job. And, and I'm definitely in support of the work session. We just have to figure out, do we want to do it in December, or we want to wait next year to do it? So what do you guys feel about that, wait to January to hold it, or to do it what's left in December?
I would say wait till New Year.
January. Yep, that's all I wanted to say. But I do, I'm going to definitely delve into that binder of stuff that's probably, and I do appreciate, once again, all of you, your hard work, and that you guys came out tonight and stayed through all the service authority and everything, and appreciate it. Thank you. With that being said, we will move on with our action items.
Mr. Binder, before we start those, may I make a motion to close session four?
Well, that's what I was going to bring up. Sorry, but thank you. Mr. Granger, we have our next action item, I was going to say, now we need a motion for our closed session concerning this matter.
Yes, ma'am. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 TAC 3711A 7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation regarding Sedgwick Crossing, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and Virginia Code Section 2.2 TAC 3711A 8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding Sedgwick Crossing. I invite the county administrator and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 TAC 3712F.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we are now in closed session.
That's my chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
I.
Oh, that's right. I'm so used to turn to Mr. Granger.
I apologize. It made it weird. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the close of meeting.
Second.
All right. Mr. Stonehill, do you certify?
So certify.
Ms. Cupka.
So certify.
Mr. Bush.
Certify.
Mr. Granger.
So certify.
This is Chair Binder, and I certify we are back in open meeting.
I move that the county authorize the appropriation and transfer $24,000 from the general fund balance to the Cedric Crossing Road Improvement Project, and issue a notice of award to Jeffrey Stack Incorporated for the Cedric Crossing Road Improvement Project, and authorize the execution of construction service agreement with Jeffrey Stack Incorporated subject to the approval asked to form by the county attorney.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we moved and we seconded to return to open session, and we each individually certified. However, I don't believe you actually called for a vote where every one of us also now has to say aye, and then it gets called that we are back in open session.
No, once you certify there.
Mr. Britton, where are we on that?
Yep. Once you certify, then the chair states we are now back in open meeting.
Yeah.
We're in open meeting. So that's one where you don't, you just have a vote to return, and then certification.
Thank you very much.
In the vote typically that's true, but we do need two motions on.
Two for three.
To authorize and appropriate the additional money in the transfer, and then the contract is completely separate. Regardless of who gets the contract, you need to have the money first.
Okay. Then I would like to make an amendment to my motion. I'd like to move to only authorize the transfer and appropriation of $24,000 from the general fund balance to the Cedric Crossing Road Improvement Project.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any needs?
If I may, I think we need to amend that motion. We didn't have the appropriation in there. We need to move the $24,000 from the general fund fund balance and then have it appropriated to.
I said transfer and appropriate.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, sir.
Is that acceptable to put it that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion for a second.
Good question. Yes, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
We already voted.
Yeah, we already voted. It got off. All right. Hold on a sec. So, and Chair votes aye, just so to clarify, that was unanimous.
Second motion.
Second motion. Something going on?
I move to authorize the execution of a construction service agreement with Jeffrey Stack Incorporated subject to the approval asked to form by the county attorney.
Any needs? Chair votes aye. Motion carries once again.
Again, I apologize, Mr. Granger. I missed it.
It's not a problem. It's better to catch it now.
Action.
It's all good. Next action item, Department of Community Development request by Port Conway Solar LLC to extend the preliminary plan approval for one year, Tax Map 31, parcels 20, 21, 23, and Tax Map 32, parcels 6, 7, 8, 9, 8, and 16. Preliminary plan prepared by Kim Lee Horn dated November 2, 2017.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I could handle this for community development, this was the only thing that was on for community development, and I told Heather that I could handle it. It's just, it's happened before. This is the third request to extend a previously granted special exception permit, 17, 18, granted in 17, extended in 18, and then 19. I understand that someone is on the phone to address any questions that you might have here. The letter attendant to this, which you have, simply says that they are, they still haven't gotten all their ducks in a row for some of the credits that they're getting. And if you have any questions on the legal front, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicant is on the phone as well. Their counsel filed it, but I believe the applicant representative is on the phone.
That's correct, Madam Chair. His name is David Crupp.
All right. Well, I appreciate, does any board, I mean, I know I have a question. Does any of my board members have a question of the applicant or of Mr. Britton concerning this matter?
Mr. Britton, is there any, is there any cutoff on these extensions and how many they can do?
No, there isn't any, anytime you could keep approving it, obviously, the concern from community development and legal front is that each time it gets extended, the county changes, and then the law changes. So we've had copious changes to, I'm sure that the person on the phone would know even better than me, but to solar farm and solar regulations such as energy, what are they called? When you get revenue sharing on five megawatt plus as well as decommissioning bonds and other things that occur. So the only thing that I think the board should consider is there is no limit on continuing to do it, but obviously if you gave three or four or five or 10 extensions, you would have granted a special exception permit on a county 10 years before with a statutory scheme from 10 years ago. And that is, was the concern of Miss, of community development and of mine that I wanted to pass along. We have the same concern that there's been changes and will continue to be changes on alternative energy fronts especially. And so, yes, it's fully legal and you're fully within your authority to extend this.
I think, Richard, did you have a question before?
Just, I guess, a follow up. So when you say to look at that from the person, I guess, it's legal to do, but is it something we need to then look at and say, hey, our ordinance for allowing this by special exception maybe needs to be modified to take into account those changes? Is that what we're talking about?
No, it wouldn't be the special exception ordinance. It would be, actually, we're looking at now presenting to you, for instance, a solar farm ordinance amendment, which will take into account the new code section this year, which allows for localities to have revenue sharing. And then the question would be, because this was granted previously, does it go under the old scheme, or does it go under the new scheme? What's grandfathered in? For instance, they added in a cascading provision for personal property taxation on the panels themselves. It used to, they get a big exemption, but now that exemption goes down year by year. It's a very complicated scheme. Presumably, it's when you install those panels, but with respect to a revenue sharing, is it, was it when the special exception was put up, or was it when the solar farm was built? So you get more and more questions, more and more age that you have on any project, whether it's a rezoning, or a subdivision, or a special exception. And so those would be the things that are more and more uncertain. So when the special exception is granted, you know what the legislative scheme is, but five years down the road, you may not. I'm not saying it's a reason to not extend it one more time. I'm just saying those considerations.
Consider. Okay. So, and who do we have online? What was the name?
David Crupp.
Crupp?
Crupp.
Yes, sir. Mr. Crupp?
Yes.
Hey, I appreciate you being here. So this is, this is a third request, and so obviously, the previous two have had to happen because it hasn't been completed. What kind of confidence do you have that this would actually be completed this year with the state?
Thanks for the question. So I would say we're hopeful. I don't want to tell you it's a, it's certainly not slam dunk. These projects are complex and take a while. For example, our project in Actonak County was in development for about five years before it came online. Our project in South Hampton County, excuse me, was probably just under two years, so it's a range, depending on a lot of factors. In this case, the primary element that is holding up this project is the interconnection to the electric grid. That's a process that can take many years with multiple studies. And the results that we have gotten back thus far have had more expense than expected, and we are exploring ways that we can hopefully bring that cost down and make the project economically viable. We're hopeful, but I don't, I don't want to do an overly optimistic statement that we expect that it will cost work in the next year. We're hopeful, and we wouldn't be asking for it if we didn't think we got a decent job, but it's not, not, you know, more than 80%.
So you don't think it would be unreasonable for us to be here a year later with another request? It's certainly within the realms of possibility is what I'm kind of hearing.
That is certainly possible, yes.
Okay. Can you do that legwork that you're talking about without having the special exception permit in place, or do you need that in place in order to move forward with doing that work?
We can do the work without the special exception in place. The, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for and obtaining the special exception, and so that work would all have to be redone, which is quite significant. So it would be unfortunate if the county decided that we're going to take away that approval, but that's, that would not prevent us from continuing to assess the interconnection. There are significant funds that are required to stay in the interconnection study process. And so if the county is showing us that you're not continuing to support the project, it becomes hard and hard to continue to spend those funds. It becomes a major difficulty to the approval.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is because of Mr. Britton, our county attorney's comments about the changing of, I guess, the regulation of solar farms. And so as more and more things change and more and more unknowns come into place, that's my big concern. You know, if it takes four or five years, what has changed and what's going to be up in the air? And does it make more sense than to say, hey, let's, if we're going to cut a deal, let's cut the deal when you're ready to start moving, as opposed to, hey, let me lock up this land here and sit on it for five years, and, you know, we'll see what happens. So that's kind of why I'm asking, and I appreciate the information, but it's really all I got. Thank you.
I can appreciate that, and I want to assure you, we're not just sitting on the land. That's not our intent. We are, we are working on it. We are hopeful. We are, but I don't want to sugarcoat it. We really appreciate and respected the relationship with the county, and we are trying to shoot it as straight as we can. We don't want to ask you to do anything that makes you feel uncomfortable. Our primary objective here is to maintain a good, positive relationship with you. We think that, you know, we have a project that's all signed, went through a nice thorough process, and got everyone on board at the time. We hope that continues to have the county's support, but we are not, we're not making a hard, you know, push, and we do not want to make anyone feel uncomfortable. That's not our goal.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this would be another extension, I believe, the third one. So my position would be, I would, I would not move to approve the special exception. And then whenever they have something that they're ready to present, where we know what we're getting, then they can go through that reapplication process for a special exception at that time. I don't want to approve something that we really don't know what it is. We're just extending it. And then like Mr. Britton said earlier, things constantly change, impacts certainly change. I would want to know, what are we getting now? And we're approving it now. Nobody has a crystal ball. You don't know what's coming down the pipe, but at least we'd be able to make a more educated decision. It's not like this is by right or something that we asked for. This is something that they're requesting a special exception. So I believe in the county's interest, we should not move to extend, and it was clear that they could still move forward with what they have to do, and then they can reapply for a special exception.
And with that, I know Mr. Britton has already spoke, being on several of the committees that I'm on with VACO, they talk about how the solar regulations have even changed since July 1. So, you know, this is over two years old of an agreement. And Mr. Britton, I just asked if we just make no motion, it just dies in the special exemption?
Yes, there's no motion required. I believe the special exception dies on the 19th?
Okay.
Okay. Yes. If you make more, there's no reason to deny the request to extend. You don't have, you don't have to do that.
Okay. So do we have any thought of before, to ask even for a motion?
I agree with Mr. Bush. I think it's, you know, this keeps getting kicked down the road so many times, over and over and over and over. And I think whenever it comes to fruition, if it does, it's going to be so changed. I'm not saying that I'm against the idea. I actually like solar, but I agree that we should probably hold off on the extension until they get a fresh plan to bring to us, and then go forward from there.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I ask a question? And I'm not sure if this is best suited to Mr. Britton, or Dr. Young, or Mr. Crupp, but I note in the board report, per Section 5.5. C of the King George County zoning ordinance, after receiving approval for a special exception, the preliminary site plan shall be valid for one year. Following the preliminary approval by the governing body, a final site plan shall be prepared and filed. Did that ever happen? Did the applicant ever file a final, following the preliminary approval, the final site plan, did that ever get filed?
And I'll defer to Mr. Crupp, but I don't believe that it has, simply because of the obstacles that they faced with getting the project completed. Am I wrong, Mr. Crupp? Have you all filed that final plan, I mean, site plan?
You're correct. The final site plan, you know, comes right before we start constructing once every, every inch is defined essentially. And so that is what has been extended obligation within a year. It's been extended previously. So that's the request to extend it. So that is not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is anyone interested in entertaining? Or we just move on to the next item? We'll move on to the next item, the county administrators' report.
Yes, Madam Chair. I received correspondence from Ms. Ann Bush. She is the chair of the CPMT. She is writing to nominate Mr. Jonathan Franklin, who is the new director of social services, to be appointed to the comprehensive policy and management team as the department social services representative. And she also asked that Ms. Melanie Cobb be appointed as the alternate representative.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any needs? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Dr. Young, Ms. Kupka.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and 8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding discussion or consideration of compensation, salaries, hazard pay, and bonuses of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding the compensation matters as stated above, and State Code Section 2.2-3711A1, for discussion and consideration of the performance and compensation of the county administrator. Invited to attend the closed meeting are the county administrator and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? Chair votes aye. We are going into closed session.
Yeah. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Do have. Thank you.
Second.
It's been a long night, once again. Mr. Stonehill, do you certify?
So certify.
Ms. Cupka.
So certify.
Mr. Bush.
So certify.
Mr. Granger.
So certify.
Chair so certifies. We are back in open meetings. So we have some motions.
Yes, yes, Board, I have two recommendations. I recommend that the board authorize, I'm sorry, the board would transfer $97,427 from the general fund balance to the general fund and be appropriated to employee compensation at the discretion of the county administrator.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Second motion.
Yes, ma'am, I'd recommend that the board authorize a transfer of $250,000 from the CARES Act to any remaining residuals of CARES funding to be transferred from the CARES Fund to the general fund for public safety salaries.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a motion for adjournment.
I have one more thing. Sorry, just real quick, I know that Mr. Stonehill had asked me about bringing back a report regarding the cigarette taxing board, just to make it real quick, I'm still working to get on the agenda for the Northern Virginia Cigarette Tax Board. It's been quite elusive because their meetings aren't regular. But in return, we have been preparing if we have to stand up a regional authority to ourselves, so I reached out to the Northern Neck Planted District Commission, and they in turn sent out a request for interest for establishing a Northern Neck Cigarette Tax Board. We held three meetings with the county administrators and the planted district, and each meeting, the membership had grown. We have now got an interest from Westmoreland County, Northumberland County, Lancaster, the Town and Montras, and we expect that we're going to see a couple more Northern Neck localities join us in the discussion tomorrow afternoon. So I'll be sending the board notes from that meeting, and we'll continue to polish what type of agreement that we could bring to our respective boards for consideration.
Any, any contact with Spotty, Caroline, Stafford, up that way?
We asked the GWRC regional localities, they really weren't interested because they don't feel like it's going to generate a significant source of revenue for their respective budgets, so that's why we decided, okay, well, we'll go ask the Northern Neck if they'd be interested in executing that taxing. It looks like it is something that Northern Neck is taking a hard look at.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Young. Motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn until December 15th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the King George High School Auditorium.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Chair votes aye.